Call to order, the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. All councils are present. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his wisdom, liberty, and justice for all.
Item three, rules of order. We follow Roberts' rules of order and any other rules that the council adopts. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, seven eighteen twenty twenty-two, regular monthly meeting, and seven twenty-five twenty twenty-two, special meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item five, city manager's report. Manager Moser.
Good evening, councilors. Real quick, I just wanted to make mention that nomination papers for city council are available as of today, and they are due with fifty registered voter signatures due back by nine twenty-six at the latest, and sooner if at all possible, because there is a deadline crunch for our, to get our ballots printed. So the sooner you can get them back, the better off we will be here getting those ballots done and done correctly. Just wanted to let everyone know that the Friday night concert this past Friday was canceled, but the series is still ongoing, and as we'll find out on a later agenda item, we're in desperate need for volunteers for the Historic Preservation Committee. So anyone out there listening who has an interest in historic, history and preserving it here in the city of Ellsworth, please reach out to City Hall to find out what you need to do in order to be on that committee. That's all I have, sir.
Any questions, comments?
Do you want to address the registration issue? In-person registration of motor vehicles?
Oh, yes. Yeah, many folks have probably realized, and if you haven't already, you will if you try to do it online. Due to the fact that we switched our software to Trio, the state requires that the first time through for vehicle registration has to be done in person. So if you've previously registered online, unfortunately this year, you won't be able to do that. You'll have to come in here to City Hall in person to register your vehicle, and then going forward, it'll be available online as well in the future. But this first year has to be in person. Thank you, Councilor Catherine.
And that runs all the way through May twenty-third, May twenty-twenty-three?
For your first, yeah, for your twenty-three vehicle registration process.
So if I wait a while, I can do it after that?
Nope. No, if you haven't done it yet, you have to come in and do it.
Get an extra year out of it sometimes.
They have your plate number, so. Item six, committee reports. Any councilors attending committees? Councilor Anderson.
The library director's search committee's been meeting and interviewing applicants, and I've made it to some of those meetings. Unfortunately, one qualified candidate withdrew her application after our June meeting, noting concern that the library was the only department for which the city council voted to cut funding below what the city manager and department heads had recommended. I cite that as an example of how the city council not valuing the library has a real effect on the library's ability to attract good candidates. Many of you will also have noticed that in addition to eliminating evening hours, the library has also closed on Mondays. Because of budget cuts, the library has also had to cancel its subscription to Hoopla, which allowed library patrons to download books on tape. So it's been a really challenging time for the library, and I appreciate the board members, staff, and patrons who are doing their best to make the most of the current situation.
Any other councilors attending? Seeing none. Item seven, citizens' comments. This is a portion of the agenda where citizens can go up to the podiums, state your name, where you're from, and you have approximately three minutes to say whatever you like.
Tony is handing up for each one of the councilors, please. I'm John Linehan, one fifty-seven Shore Road here in Ellsworth. I did take out my papers this morning for the Ellsworth City Council. I've been to every city council meeting since the last agenda, since the last election, and I'm really concerned about the direction that our city is headed. I'm also running for the House of Representatives for District Thirteen, which Ellsworth is the largest primary city. I am a Christian, and I have a love for my Lord and Savior Jesus, my family. Right after that is my hometown, which is Ellsworth. So I've decided I'm going to put every bit of effort I can to try to change the direction of our, of our city in, because I believe it's headed in the wrong direction, especially economically. I believe our republic's in trouble, our state's in trouble, and our city's in trouble, economically and financially. We have high inflation, high gas prices, high food prices, high energy prices, and more coming. It's not going to get easier, it's going to get tougher. I was really disappointed with the way the council handed the budget at the last meeting. It seemed like there was a talk about holding the budget somewhat near down and all going up, and then at the end, when it came time, the vote went around the table, this was added, that was added, and those things kept added back into the budget, which I thought was very poor for our community. So I'm already fighting as best I can around different places in Ellsworth to fight to keep these things under control. I believe the best way to do that is to be on the city council, and I believe we need a change in leadership in that area. I am an American-first, state-first, Ellsworth-first, and I put the people first. I think the people are really hurting in our community right now financially. I believe that, the people I'm talking with. So my goal is to try to get on the council and make a difference. I look at it as a job interview, and if people vote me in, I think I'm the best candidate for the job, and I'll work hard for this community, for the people, to get their expenses. It's all about the money, to me, for the people, not for us like that. So that's what I'm working on. I'm excited to, for the opportunity again to be not just on the city council, but also as a host. I'm a member of several groups around the state of Maine right now that have similar values that I do. We're constitutionalists, we're patriots, we want to take America back and restore the foundational principles that our country, our state, and our city was founded on, and I think we've gotten away from that. And I think this election's the most critical in our city's history. I hope I'm victorious. I hope there's at least two other candidates that'll be willing to step up with the same positions that will get elected. And that's what I'm here for. I am doing very good with my foot. I'm out of the walking boot, I'm off the crutches, I'm down in the home therapy. So I can't stay to the meeting tonight, but I'll be watching it on TV while I'm elevated and iced. But I appreciate everybody's patience with me as I had to limp up, come up to the podium the last couple of times. So thank you for being patient with me, and I'm looking forward to a spirited, exciting election this coming fall. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak?
Steve O'Halloran, Ellsworth resident, five sixty Mariahville Road, lived here for fifty-seven years. Have a business on the Bangor Road, at five twenty-five Bangor Road. Had a great experience last week. A gentleman from code enforcement showed up to do a fire inspection. Looked through the building to point out any areas that needed improvement. I thought that was a great service that the city provides the taxpayers.
Seeing none. We'll move to item eight, presentation of awards. First is Joshua Newman.
In recognition of your five years of service as truck driver for the city of Ellsworth Public Works Department, your duty and loyalty to the community of contributing to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth, presented this fifteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two. Congratulations.
And I don't believe the others are present, but I will certainly recognize each of these individuals. Jared Grindle, in recognition of your ten years of service as equipment operator for the city of Ellsworth Public Works Department, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community of contributing to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Brian Clement, in recognition of your five years of service as truck driver for the city of Ellsworth Public Works Department, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community of contributing to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. And Christopher Smith, in recognition of your twenty years of service as a police officer for the city of Ellsworth Police Department, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. And I would just comment and make a quick comment about all these recognitions. Obviously, sometimes they work during the day and they can't be here in the evening, but I think, I think I can speak for the council when we say thank you to all the city employees, especially with the environment we're in. It's a tough environment with recruitment and the work that, that is conducted by all these individuals who have been recognized for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. It's impressive, so thank you. Unfinished business. Item nine, discussion and potential action on the charter review process. So as we have discussed on several occasions, there's a need for us as a council to make a decision about the charter. The charter is supposed to be reviewed every ten years, at least minimally ten years, and we're at that point where the charter needs to be reviewed. The clerk presented us with information to review in between the meetings to decide what process we would like to follow. We could do it, this kind of the informal process where the council could say they've reviewed the charter and no changes and move it on, or we can commission, a charter commission, which involves individuals within the community to look at, at the charter, to make any updates, changes that that committee wants to recommend going forward. So it can be a pretty extensive process. So with that, that's what this is this evening, is to discuss the issue and move it in the direction that the council wishes for, to review the charter. As Manager Moser, I think you have some thoughts about it from the city side, staff side?
Yeah, so we've identified, the staff has identified some amendments to the charter that need to be made. Some are very incidental, just identification of, of individual job titles that, that have changed over the years since the last time the charter was reviewed. And then there's some other, like the issue that we raised, that I raised tonight with the, with the ballots and the printing of the ballots and the timeframe around the taking out of papers. There needs to be some adjustments made to those dates in the charter, because the laws have changed since the charter was last reviewed. So mostly just that we've identified anyway, we being staff, have identified it's mostly just clerical type of amendments that don't impact or wouldn't require a full charter review with a, with a charter committee. But if, if the council so chooses to make more drastic changes to the charter, then it's likely that it would require a complete charter commission.
Councilor Catherine.
Is it possible to just have a workshop to review what changes we may look at, and then also incorporate the public in that workshop? For example, Gary Fortier is probably the most versed person on the city charter that I know of. Is it possible to do that?
I, I think so, in terms of it's, it could, would be a step in kind of moving it forward. If, and then at that point afterwards, there might be a need to, to form a charter commission, depending on what comes out of that. I've finished my read on.
Yeah, so even the, even the amendments, like the amendments that the, that the staff is suggesting, those would still, those have to go through a review process, which would include a, a public hearing, and so that would, that could provide that opportunity. So we could do it a couple of ways. Staff could provide the council with the recommended amendments, and you've, and you, once you had an opportunity to review those, if you felt that there weren't, there wasn't a need for any additional changes to the charter, we could move forward with bringing those amendments for a public hearing and, and making those amendments to the charter. Or we could, yeah, or we could just look to schedule a workshop and bring those amendments to that workshop, and then additionally, if councilors know of other changes they would like to see to the council, then we could work through those and, and potentially get some public input.
What's the timeframe for completing something like this?
Well, as far as the chart is, if we're supposed to review every ten years, it doesn't, I don't think it specifies the timeline for once you start that review process. I didn't, I haven't read anything that says it, there's a, it's restricted. I think it's whatever it takes to resolve that and work through it, so.
When was the last time it was reviewed?
It's been, I think it was, last year was ten, year anniversary. The last time it was, John Hammer did a review, there wasn't, there wasn't a charter commission on, to my knowledge, the work, these changes.
Probably been twenty years since anybody really, rarely looked it over, right?
I, I don't know. Like I said, it was done, it was done about ten years ago, might be eleven now, by John Hammer, and I don't know at that time what specific, if any, changes were made to the charter.
Yeah, I'd like a workshop where the public could give their input, especially since it's been twenty years since they've been allowed to.
Exactly.
Or, or?
It can't be twenty years, because it was amended by vote in two thousand eleven, and any amendment, at least based on what Tony sent us, any amendment that we make actually has to get voted on.
Right.
But I mean, one person can look it over and say, oh, everything looks good, and then everybody can say, well, we'll just vote for it then.
There was not really allowing public.
Right.
No, it has to. It's required, a public hearing and then a ballot.
A public hearing, that is a meaningful, that is a part, input. I would like to make sure, allow them to say.
Yeah. Let them have a voice.
Yes.
So if we did a workshop with the idea that, like, again, that's, the thing that Tony sent made it seem like you can amend your charter or you can revise your charter, and revising your charter requires a charter commission, that's the one with the one-year time limit, there's a lot of things, but that's like if someone really thinks we need to change the way we're governing, whereas it sounds like, I haven't heard anybody say we should do that, that it's a little bit more amendment stuff. So could the workshop also count as the public hearing if we made, if we publicized it and made opportunity, like, could we do that all in one meeting?
Well, we can't take action at a workshop anyway, so we'd have to bring it back for a full council meeting to take action, so we just have a public hearing at the council meeting to address the amendments. But I was just notified by staff that the, there was a full charter commission done around two thousand ten, so that's probably what you're looking at there, but, but I, regardless, I don't thi, I mean, a lot's changed since two thousand ten, so I don't see any harm in holding a, a workshop and, and advertising to see if we can get any public participation in that process to, without, and out of that workshop, we may decide that based on public participation and your review of the charter, that there needs to be drastic changes to it that would require a commission, so.
Councilor Blackett.
There's one person in the room who might have an answer to something. Oh, don't shake your head, Michelle. My only question, when it was done in two thousand ten, do you recall the time it took? I want to, I want to say it was around eighteen months from start to finish. Does that sound about right?
I thought it was, I thought it was a year. It's a long time ago. But it, and we did have a commission, and we, the council appointed people from the public to participate. John Hammer led the commission for us, took the notes, put all, everything together, and then it came back to the council.
From the time, from the time that the commission was named, that we got all the members in it, to the time that the charter was passed was a year?
I think it was a year. It might have been a little more, but it was, it was about a year.
The MMA says it has to be a year, but then you could apply for an extension for the second year.
And I don't remember doing that.
All right. Thanks.
Twelve years ago, so I can't remember.
I'll leave you alone now.
Anybody recommending a direction?
I move that we hold a workshop with the public participation.
Second.
To review the char, or for the charter review process.
So you have a motion and a second, and enthusiastic second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to hold a workshop? Consent agenda, consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routinely enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item ten, council order number zero eight one five zero one, request of the Harvard Commission to, to appoint Christina Petros to the alternate position. And item eleven, request of the Historic Preservation Commission to accept resignation from Carolyn Ackerman.
Bill Fogel, Catherine Fox.
Which will leave vacancies on the commission. Anybody like to remove the, any one of those items?
You're saying all three of those people resigned?
All three of those people resigned.
How many people are on it?
One.
One. See, then, is there a motion? Motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Councilor Miller, do you want to, just tagging along the item? We, we do have.
We have an application for the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'd like to nominate her, Jennifer Sala, to be a member of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Any discussion?
I don't know anything about her.
By, by doing this, it, they're kind of stuck as a committee in terms of not having the numbers. There's still plenty of vacancies, so anybody that's interested in being on the commission will still have the opportunity to do so, and, and this just moves the process a little Any further comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. New business. Item twelve, public hearing in action on the application for the following licenses. Madam Clark, are everything in order, and all of these are renewals?
Yes, sir.
Marg's Mex Ellsworth LLC DBA, Margaritas Ellsworth, one ninety-one Main Street, for renewal of a city class B license, amusement liquor, vichyler, and renewal of a state class A restaurant, lounge, mall, liquor, wine, spirits, class eleven liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If anybody would like to comment on that, they may do so. Waiting, waiting, waiting. Seeing none. I'll close the pub.
I'd like to say something. I, I think alcohol is like the biggest depression on the planet.
Can we hold the podium, please?
Yes. Sir.
I don't think it's actually healthy to travel from there.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve Marg's Mexican Ellsworth Restaurant.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Maine Organic Therapy DBA, Cure Leaf Maine, three Myrick Street, Suite B, for renewal of a medical marijuana dispensary license, including a city vichyler license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to comment, may do so. If you want to comment, can you just go to the podium so that you can be heard?
I mean, I guess I, I'm a little confused. I kind of just came back here from traveling, but I mean, in the state of Maine, my understanding is that there's a medical requirement in terms of they're not allowing people to be able to get recreational cannabis. But I mean, keep in mind, this is a gift from God, it's a seed. I think we need to plant a seed for those in need to overcome greed, so we can all succeed without having to plead, because right now, I mean, this summer has been kind of rough on crops, and people haven't been planning ahead, and people look to you for leadership, and I, I feel like a lot of people don't realize that not all readers are leaders, but all leaders are readers, and I don't know what kind of books you're reading, but I think we need to focus a little bit more on farming and fishing, because that's what this country is founded on, and bartering trade is the way to go, because I mean, right now, everybody's switching over to like PayPal and Venmo and everything like that. I mean, this fellow that's the richest man on the planet, he basically created PayPal, but keep in mind, he's generating a lot of his money so people can go to Mars, which is the most idiotic thing I ever heard in my life, because Mars ain't even habitable. If we're going to go to a different planet, we ought to go to Venus. So right now, I mean, I, I don't understand why people aren't being able to like advocate for people that are farming and fishing, because I mean, these are things that we need to basically plant more food in the ocean, because you can grow fish just like you can food.
All right, thanks. So thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? Councilor Catherine.
I'm still opposed, because they do not put a warning label on their products that they distribute to Ellsworth residents, as well as others, that list the potential side effects, the psychiatric side effects of marijuana use. They also sell it to pregnant women, and unfortunately, it has negative side effects on the developing fetus due to the interruption of the anamid on the gamma and the glutamate receptor, which basically tells the brain how to grow, leads to small head size, growth restriction, leads to behavioral difficulties in children, cognitive decline, cognitive disability in children who are born to mothers who smoke marijuana, so I will not be supporting that.
Any other comments?
Can I say something else, please?
No, it's, you can't at this point.
Because I mean, a lot of times people leave.
Sir, you can't, you can't talk right now at this point. All those in favor? All those opposed? Four in favor, two, or five in favor, two opposed. Motion passes. Peppers Pub, twenty Water Street, for renewal of a city class B license and renewal of a state class A restaurant, lounge, liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody wish to comment on this applicant? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move approval.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
That's one way to make money.
Item.
No more liquor. There you go.
Okay, sir.
Liquor's quicker, you know?
Item thirteen, council order number zero eight one. Sir, you need to, sir.
Why don't you talk about that? You're talking about.
Sir, you need.
Liquor ain't helping base either.
Item thirteen, council order number zero eight one five zero two, request of the Public Works Director to accept the winter sand mineral screening bid.
Good evening, councilors. Lisa Secklich, Public Works Director. On Wednesday, August tenth, the city of Ellsworth accepted bids for mineral screening. Four RFPs were requested, and only one bid was received. You'll see the followings on your paperwork as a summary of the bids received. We asked that nine thousand yards of winter sand be screened and three thousand yards of two-inch minus gravel to be screened. Both those came back with a bid price of three eighty-five a cubic yard. And then we asked the contractor if they'd be willing to purchase the tailings, which are the larger rocks that come from screening our winter sand, and they take that and they purchase that back for a credit on their screening price. That being said, I am asking to award the contract KJ Dugess, who has done this work previously, last couple of years for us, done a good job, and they were only better.
Was the quantities the same last?
Was the quantities the same last year?
The quantity of sand, I believe, was 9,500 last year, if I remember correctly. And we did not screen gravel last year.
So how much has it gone up over last year?
What's that?
How much has it gone up over last year per yard?
I believe it was about a dollar a cubic yard. That it's gone up, just under, I think. I think it was just under $3 last year and it's $3.85 this year.
Understandable.
Move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to enter into an agreement with Woodard and Kern for culvert and storm drain. Nope, nope, sorry. I'm ahead of myself. Mineral screening to KJ Dugus Construction at the rate of $3.85 per cubic yard for screening city sand and gravel. The city also reserves the right to order sand screening from January through April 23 at a price of $6 per cubic yard.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
No, I'm in favor, yeah, sorry.
Unanimous. Tragic.
Thank you.
Item 14, council order number 081503, request of the Public Works Director to enter into an agreement for storm drain mapping and engineering with Woodard and Kern.
Good evening again, councilors. I also have Brent Bridges here from Woodard and Kern to answer any questions that you guys might have regarding the proposal. But if you see the attached proposal from Woodard and Kern, we are requesting to go into an agreement with them to complete a culvert slash storm drain assessment and evaluation. This is a comprehensive drainage analysis and will complete our mapping and inventory of all existing conditions on a digital platform, model our system so that we can determine areas needing upgrades, what new systems might look like, and to prioritize the improvements needed based on cost and integration with other potential capital improvement, infrastructure projects we have going forward. So we're looking to map our system, which has already been started. We're going to look at and assess everything we have and then really put a good plan together on how do we tackle all the issues we're having.
Council, Councilwoman Blatchett.
Lisa, this is on top of the work that I believe it was students from COA did for us.
We had, Subego Tech did some work before I got here with Michelle Gagnon in, oh God, 2012, 15, 15, somewhere in there. And they did a, not quite a third of our system. This is, this took what we had from that work, put it into a mapping system, and then it's going to continue that process.
Okay, so this, we aren't going to repeat what they did?
Nope. They took what we already had. There were a lot of questions on what Subego did, you know, things that needed to be checked out in the field that didn't necessarily all get checked out. So they will capture that and go back and double check, but it won't be, it won't be completely redoing what's already been done.
Can you explain a little bit, especially to give the public a better sense of what does this mean? Why is this important and what does this lead to in the future? In terms of if we don't do this, in terms of the mapping, how is it being used? Why are we doing it now? Can you just summarize that a bit so that everybody-
Yep, so Brent can help me too. But, so there's multiple reasons this is positive. So one thing is for development and developers. A lot of times they come in wanting to know, you know, what our existing system is, what it can handle. Is it possible to put in an apartment complex that's going to have drainage that goes into our drainage? This kind of information is going to all be in one spot in a digital form that we can send to developers, the planning department, the economic development department. And everybody within the city will have the same information, work off the same data. So that's the positive of getting everything digital and mapped. On the, you know, the side of our system, as everybody has probably seen on our Facebook page, we've had two major roads shut down the last couple of weeks because of culvert and drainage failures. This is so that we can hopefully, in the next five to 10 years, get ahead of those things. So we don't have to say, oh, sorry, we got to shut down School Street because we have a sinkhole. It's not going to stop everything, but it's going to assess what we have, what we took over from the state of Maine. A lot of that's unknown. We don't know what's there exactly. We don't know how old it is. And that's what this is going to do. This is going to categorize it all for us, put it all on a list and tell us, okay, what's the priorities? What do we need to go look for funding for? How do we go look for funding? And be able to look at all utilities, water, sewer, storm drain, and start really tackling those projects and the paving that goes along with it.
Councilor.
So in the proposal, it talks about using 2D and 1D drainage models. And it specifically talks about using the Infoworks, ICM, and XPSWMM software. Are we going to have to purchase that software once this is all done?
Brent Bridges, Woodard and Kern. So as part of the work is, it's not just a mapping project. You have 12 miles of stormwater system, including all the structures in place right now. And so the aspect of this, we'll work with Vortex. So we'll send a TV camera up each pipe. And so we'll have an assessment in every pipe. We'll be able to say which pipes are solid, which are not, which is going to be repaired. When we do the modeling work, we'll look at future development as well as existing development. Been a long time since we've been investing in the stormwater system in the city. It's kind of pieced together. And so by looking at that and doing that modeling, we'll be able to tell what pipes are sized right, what needs to be upsized to be repaired, where extensions to the system should be, and so, and a cost of all of that. And so what should the stormwater system for the City of Ellsworth over the next 30 years look like? And where should it be? How can you, what do you get a cost to be able to develop it? And so all of that work is a complete assessment, looking to the future, looking at what we have right now. And again, understanding the stormwater system, it seeks its lowest place, right? And a lot of your system, because ditches have been filled in, culverts have been, you know, those kind of things, are in a little bit of disrepair. What we need to do is go out into the system, capture that water for runs downtown, and to pick it up and to discharge it so we don't have areas of flood and backup and that kind of thing. So it's a, the model itself, it's all the software that we have. But it will project out all those things to say what floods now, what we not want to do in the future to flood, what system needs to be expanded upon, and what that cost would be.
So how will that data be delivered? Will it be delivered in a presentation, a report? Or how would the water department access that data once your report is done?
So we've, the things we've done right now is we've started to put all the JGS work that we've done on Google. So it's not a proprietary system. And so what we'll do is all the information, so all the pictures, all the pipes, get all, everything we've done will be brought into that platform, Google platform, and turned over to the city. You'll have a report with the cost, and then all the information will be turned over so you've got easy access to it. And we found that's a non-proprietary platform that we'll do it to present. You could-
And how secure is that as far as cybersecurity with Google?
From a cybersecurity standpoint, you are, you're at the, you're with Google, right? So you're only as safe as Google is right now.
Right.
What we've found is, we can do it in a proprietary way. Most, most communities don't like the investment of having to maintain a proprietary system. And so you can still do that. We'll present it in a way that you can transfer it over if you want to. But to be able, as we're going through the process, for everyone to test it, to look at it, to access it, to see how easy it is to use, we'll present it in a Google platform to them.
I just have a comment. I'd like to add that this was probably the number one concern of the Roads Committee. Is that right, Councilwoman Blatchett?
It is.
One of the positive notes I did want to mention too before we got done is that this project is basically fully funded from the DEP money, the 2.2 million from the DEP. That's what we're going to use, the storm drain side of that money to do this project.
Councilwoman Blatchett.
Lisa and Brent, a question. But it says that it's going to tell us the condition of the pipe. Is that the physical condition or is it the condition, hey, it's half full of sand? And-
And that, no, that's what he's talking about. Vortex is going to come and clean out, suck out basins, and then run a TV camera through them. So it's a TV camera. It's literally like watching a home video. You can say, oh, there's a crack here. It's crushed here. It's seeping water here. It cleans out and goes through. You know, if one's completely full of sand, we won't necessarily, we might not be able to get through that one. But it will-
But that, you're talking catch basins.
That's catch basins and the pipes between the catch basins. So they enter from a catch basin and then they come out at the next catch basin.
So all of the pipes are going to get vortexed, all the culverts?
That's the plan.
So it's like a colonoscopy for our piping system?
It is. It's not, it may, like some of them, I mean, I won't lie to you. We probably have some that are completely blocked and that we won't be able to get through. But then we note that in our system that it's blocked from this pipe to this pipe. And we can, if we would like to pay, they probably, they probably could spend extra time to clean it out, but.
Hopefully, they're sedated. Councilor Hanson.
We do have, so we have, in the proposal, we have, because it's very hard to keep up with it, I suppose, we have 10 days of cleaning all the lines and 40 days of TV inspecting. So we don't get to a line at all, so we can't get through because it's not clean. And so it's very hard to be able to have, Lisa's going to clean out all the lines prior to inspection. So we have 10 days of cleaning of everything we've done on TV.
So it's exactly like a colonoscopy?
And so then we'll go and TV everything so everything's clean so we can see it, so nothing's-
Councilor Hanson.
I just had a question. It was just out of curiosity. Is there somebody on your team who has expertise in what weather we may predict in the future given climate change, changes? I don't, I'm not an expert in that, so I don't know, but I just wonder how you factor that sort of thing in?
Yes, we do. And so in doing all the modeling, the, for the most part of this, what you do is, it's running 25-year storm events to be able to see exactly what the conditions are with the 25-year storm, where do things pond up? We can predict how much ponding we get over catch basins and things like that, what we need to do to be able to change that condition. And so, yes, we do that, absolutely.
Councilwoman Hope.
This is just a question. $280,000 not to exceed. Doesn't the city know that there's at least $280,000 of repairs that could be done with this money now without looking for more?
So yes. Are there $280,000 worth of repairs we can do? Yes.
So we already-
Problem is, is that we need to know where to start. So let's just say we have problems up by the hospital. There's some flooding that happens up there. Problem is, the flooding may not be happening just because there's a problem up there. Problem could be that by the time you're at the hospital, to Birch Avenue down here, to Oak Street, to Main Street, everything goes to, most everything goes to the river. The idea is that when you do these type of repairs and you do this type of work, you have to make sure that if you upsize the pipe by the hospital, the pipe downstream can handle that additional water. Because all you're doing then is just taking the water problem you have by the hospital and becoming a water problem you have here at City Hall. And so that's why you really need to take a comprehensive look at the whole system and see where those pinch points are, how much the pipes that we have can handle, and start attacking it that way.
But there are immediate repairs that you're aware of that need to be done?
Yes. I mean, highway is consistently doing repairs and maintenance on a weekly basis on different things. But it's the comprehensive look that'll really get us to the point where we'll be able to do bigger projects. You know, repairing one section of line is different than upsizing the entire Main Street corridor so that we can put all the area by the hospital into the Main Street corridor and all the stuff from Oak Street. You know, we're looking to redo Oak Street in the near future. But if we can't get the water from Oak Street down to the river, then there's no point in making that investment.
Councilwoman Miller.
And that this will also give you an accurate map, which we don't have right now.
Correct.
Can I try this again since I started it once before? Move to approve the request of the Public Works Directors to enter into an agreement with Woodard and Kern for culvert and storm drain assessment and allow city manager to sign required documentation. Work to be completed with a not to exceed amount of $280,000 to be funded from Maine DEP grant funds previously accepted by the council.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? One opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 15, council order number 081504, request of the Public Works Director to enter into an agreement for curbside trash removal with Casella Pine Tree Waste.
Good evening, councilors. On Tuesday, July 26th, the city accepted bids for the five-year curbside trash pickup contract. Seven RFPs were solicited. Two responses were received. One response was a notice that the provider would not be submitting a bid, and the second was from Casella/Pine Tree Waste. Casella Pine Tree Waste has been serving the Ellsworth community for approximately 10 years now. And it would be my recommendation to continue using their services.
Discussion. Councilwoman Hope.
Could you put the numbers in your speech that was 70,000 last year? And this year it's 208. Am I round numbers there?
Correct.
I'm using round numbers. And can you explain to the city how this works, this curbside service works? Are they paying any more than the tag fee to have it picked up?
Nope.
At the curb?
So, yep, I can explain it. So Casella Waste comes and services the City of Ellsworth. With our 94 square miles, it's a fairly significant amount of mileage that they do put on the trucks. So they do it over the course of two days. They're here Monday and Tuesday. So the people that get curbside trash pickup, they put their $3 trash sticker on their bag of trash and they put it out at the end of their driveway or at the end of their road, depending on if they live on a private road. It gets put at where the private road intersects the public road. And then it gets picked up by Casella on Monday or Tuesday. But they're paying the same amount to have that service as someone who would go to the transfer station to deposit their trash.
So everyone's paying $3, rather they transport it to the transfer station? Or rather they take it to the curb?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Yep, it's a personal choice.
And the price is going up from 70? Can you give me the number, 70?
I don't have the exact last year's price. I think we budgeted 73,000, I think it was.
And this year it's 208?
Correct.
This is a question. Is this a time to look at expanding the hours, putting dollars into the transfer station and expanding the hours and opening the transfer station seven days a week? And considering eliminating the curbside pickup?
That is an option. I will tell you that right now in the summertime, we are hauling trash once, sometimes twice a week. So if you were to take, right now I believe it's 60% transfer station, 40% curbside? What's that?
Yeah, roughly 40.
Roughly, yes. So 60% is going to transfer station and about 40% is going curbside. Sorry, Jim Dunning from Casella is here. So that being said, you know, you would be hauling, your hauling contract prices would go up, right? So it's not, it's not like, okay, we get rid of curbside trash and all of a sudden we just go to the transfer station and there's no additional costs. You're going to double the cost of our hauling contract. I don't have those exact figures, but I believe it would be somewhere near the same amount.
Lisa.
So trash, curbside pickup, does that go to the transfer station or does it go direct- So, trash, curbside pickup, does that go to the transfer station or does it go directly to?
It goes directly to perk.
Perk, so this two hundred and ten thousand dollars includes that fee or does not include that fee?
Well, it includes them taking it to perk, perk is a separate fee.
So we're gonna pay that fee whether it comes from the transfer station or whether it comes from a curbside pickup? It's the same fee at the disposal area?
So there's a hauling fee, no matter what kind of trash we do, there's a hauling fee, whether it's a hauling from the transfer station or a curbside pickup, those are what I would consider the hauling fees. Then when it gets to perks, there's also a perk tipping fee. The perk tipping fee is the same from our transfer station trash and our curbside pickup trash place, the same tipping fee at perk. So there's two fees for every.
You have a.
So, um, what part of this two hundred and ten thousand dollars is transportation?
That would be a Jim question.
All of them.
So this is Jim Dunning from Casella.
Yes, so it's purely a collection contract. So that price is for us to come and collect the material and deliver it to the perk incinerator facility. So effectively, it's a transportation cost. Within that, of course, you have the investment and the capital for the trucks. You've got the operating costs, the maintenance, the labor, the wages, all those things. But essentially, yes, it's a transportation contract to drive every road mile in the city of Ellsworth, pick up anything that has a tag on it and deliver it directly to the perk incinerator facility on Mondays and Tuesdays.
What happens with the three dollars that you pay for the tag?
That's a city question, has nothing to do with us.
That goes to the city, does that pay for this two hundred and something thousand?
Yep, over the last few years, um, tags, I don't have exact numbers because we don't have the final audit of twenty twenty-one yet. But generally speaking, tags bring in over two hundred and five thousand dollars a year.
Do you know what the tipping fee is per ton?
Seventy-nine?
I was gonna say high seventies, but.
I think it's seventy-nine a ton. Seventy-nine something and some change, seventy-eight, seventy-nine something.
Seventy-nine dollars per ton?
Correct.
Councilor Hanson.
So if, if, if you, you talk about the curbside, if you did away with that, all that trash goes to the transfer station, which in fact, then you've got three times as many containers leaving there to go to perk, so. It's, it's just seemed like we're better off having less trash go through the transfer station.
It's really six and one half, doesn't have another in a lot of ways.
But I mean, it's no benefit to hauling it there and then taking it up there than it is for them to pick it up and just haul it direct to there. The only other question I had about the whole trash thing is, I've had a couple people, and one is actually the road I live on, they put it at the end of the road and at four o'clock in the morning. By the time eight o'clock rolls around or nine o'clock, the crows, the bears, um, you know, and then the nice neighbors stop and have to pick it all up. And we have one lady that has done her fair share because people like me don't get home until late. But it is just a disgusting mess sometimes that people have to pick up. I don't know, and it's not their property, you know, where they're putting it.
Right.
It's somebody else's actual property, so what?
It's, it's, it's the idea that they can't drive on private roads. Right, they, they, they drive on city roads as a city contract.
Just due to the weight of the equipment?
I have a dumpster in my yard that they come down and pick up.
Right, so you also have signed some type of waiver or if something were to happen on your property, you've contracted us directly for that service and it's your property. So we do in some municipalities travel some private ways that are maintained by the community, even though technically it's a private way, but it's maintained by a community. So it's wide enough for our vehicles, it's also plowed by the municipality so we can have access to it. And what we do require in those cases is that the homeowners association or the road association signs a waiver that says, hey, if we put our truck on your dirt road in the spring and we rut it up, so be it, you've asked us to do it. So every case is a little different, and we've worked with other communities in certain locations where there's a lot of this type of material. Some locations, it, it tends to collect over time and try to come up with solutions. Uh, but every, every case is unique, but the biggest factor there is just the, the weight of the truck and the equipment and the, you know, clear access way to get there and who is responsible if damage is done. Right, we're asked to do it.
Councilor Kaplan.
I think that, um, curbside service is a, it's a service. It's a convenience for those that don't want to put the trash in their own vehicle and risk having it leak. Um, you know, if you've ever have a, have, ever had a lobster dinner, you don't want that in your car. So, uh, it is a convenience. There's also some people that just simply don't have the capacity to take it to the transfer center. Uh, whether it's older folks or, uh, maybe people don't have a vehicle. And the only thing they can do is take it to the curb, they live in town, it works for them. But I do find it sort of, I understand there has to be a fee to cover the costs. But I do find it unfair for those that do have to go to the transfer center because they do live on a private road and don't have access to curbside service, uh, for either fear of bears and crows or it's just not available to us. We're paying the same exact fee to do the same work, putting it in our own vehicle and transporting it ourselves. Why is the, why is the sticker price the same for curbside versus transfer center? It should be more like a four dollar for curbside and two dollars for transfer, in my opinion.
The hard part of tracking that is that if you go to the store, say, Anafford's or Shaw's or, um, any of the other places you can pick up stickers, um, then keeping track of two different types of stickers.
Red and blue.
So I will add that we do have a solid waste committee. Um, and it might be an opportunity to have a committee meeting to discuss a lot of these different topics. Um, but unfortunately tonight, we do have to make a a move on this contract as to what direction we wanna go, at least for the immediate, because they are providing the service right now, uh, even though our contract expired in July, so. Casella has graciously extended while we went through the RFP process and got to here tonight, so.
So what's another twelve months?
Good job, good job.
Eleven?
If, if I could speak to you, I'm more than happy to come to any of those type of discussions and, you know, share experiences with other municipalities and think we've seen them put into place to, to do as, as you mentioned, just look outside the box and what else could we do different? Because I don't know when the last time was you adjusted your tag price. Some communities have maintained it for years and years and years. Some communities update it every five years, so there might be an opportunity there or something like you suggested with different color tags for transfer station versus curbside. But, uh, we also have an option with our automated side load service, which if you go to Bangor on trash day, which happens five days a week, you'll see all those blue carts out there. We go around with a truck that has an automated arm on it and it's an operator that empties them into the truck. Uh, keeps things neat, clean, you don't run into all the rodents and pest issues and things of that sort. So there's a lot of technology that we're utilizing now, along with the onboard computers, the video access on the trucks that, uh, provide a lot of intelligence for us that could help in that process.
And has that saved Bangor any money?
It did in some ways, uh, with the automated collection, so it, it, it can be a money saver.
You sound hesitant.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna promise you that it would save you money if you did that because honestly, in Ellsworth, I don't think it would because of what we'd have to do to shift participation around and the number of carts you need. So if we look at it with the cart capital, y- you can look at it through different lenses. So we became more efficient in Bangor, we had two trucks with four laborers on it in Bangor. And with the automated side load collection, the four labor positions went away in Ellsworth, and those were running five days a week. In Ellsworth, we have one truck and a laborer that goes out two days a week. So there would be some savings on the labor side, but you're also looking at a truck that's a half a million dollars in capital versus a truck that's three hundred and eighty, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So you've got, you've got some things that you could do. And if you looked at a ten-year commitment like Bangor versus a five-year commitment in Ellsworth, there are ways to spread those costs out to try to extract the greatest amount of savings. But it's not a, a huge needle shifter. So that's why I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna make you think that if you went with side load, you're gonna save all this money. But what you do is you improve the sanitary look of everything that's out there, you know, the, the appearance of carts lined up. Everybody gets a ninety-six gallon wheeled cart that they can easily get to the curb, fill it up. It's uniform, it's consistent, the lids are pretty heavy, so they're not typically blowing open. You don't have, you know, all those rodent pest issues, the crows going through the trash and having litter problems. So there's a lot of benefits to it financially, not necessarily the, the biggest advantage to it.
Are those bins that Casella provides?
Yes, so in the city of Bangor's example, we provided them. Uh, other communities may choose to use their own funds to purchase them, but the city of Bangor opted for us to provide them because of the fact we buy so many in volume throughout the footprint of our company in the Northeast. We tend to get better pricing than somebody who was just gonna order five thousand carts or ten thousand carts. So we're able to pass that savings along and model by utilizing our capital to purchase them and build that into the price of the collection contract.
And the longer the commitment, let's say a five-year versus a ten-year?
Mm-hmm.
Does the average cost per year drop?
No, so it's baked into the ten-year model when we model the whole price up. You've got your truck, your carts, all that capital spread out of, out of over ten years versus five years, which naturally brings the total price down, but we don't bring it down in the successive years. It's here's the ten-year investment, broken up into the ten years with an inflationary adjustment. So it's not something that declines, it's just the total investment. Instead of saying, hey, we've gotta spend all this capital, break it up over five years, and that's how much capital you're paying for over a five-year term versus a ten-year term.
I see.
So a lot of stuff we can talk about in those type of settings too, that even though we would be in a collection contract with you, it would be in there that we're, we're open to working with you, whether it's related to the transfer station, which we're delivering material from the transfer station to perk right now, or the curbside collection program. So it's a good opportunity to kinda take a, take a fresh look at things. It's been bounced around quite a few times through the years down here as far as the transfer station operation, curbside, the pros and cons of each, where's the sweet spot? And we would be more than happy to revisit those conversations.
Councilor Kaplan.
Now, since we have a proposal on the table now, um, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Public Works Director to award the five-year curbside trash pickup contract to Casella slash Pine Tree Waste per the attached RFP response and subsequent proposal option and authorize the city manager to sign required documents. This agreement will be in effect from August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Second.
You have a motion and second, further discussion?
Um, just one question. In the budget, um, this year, I believe we funded seventy, seventy-five thousand?
Seven, two or three, yeah.
The other hundred and forty for this coming year.
So, per the attached proposal, Casella, um, agreed to kind of soften the blow essentially. So the first year, um, the contract would only be a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And then the additional fifty thousand would be spread over his years, two, three, four, and five. So we would only have to come up with an additional approximately seventy or eighty-two, eighty-three thousand.
Which, yeah, so the deferring of the cost will afford us the opportunity to budget it in future years. And this year, with our revenues from the stickers and other revenue sources from the transfer station, we should be able to cover the, the shortfall from what we budgeted to what it's actually gonna cost us for the curbside pickup contract. I'd love for you to give it to us all at once.
And that includes the fifty thousand dollar deferral that's mentioned?
Yeah, so it'd be a hundred and fifty-eight this year and then the, the additional fifty would be.
Then forty percent billed over year two?
It'd be forty percent of that fifty thousand would be on year two, thirty percent of it would be on year three.
And twenty over year four.
There's no interest charge or any, anything like that, it's just a straight reallocation of the funds.
Not that anybody will remember this next budget time or two years from now, but it's worth saying, this is obviously a result in terms of costs are going up and this is one of those areas that's, we don't have control. We can, I, we could vote not to have trash pickup, we could do that. Um, we would incur the expense. But what this will do is that it will make that line item, um, considerably more expensive next budget, which automatically, if everything stays even, the, the budget increases right off the bat um, as we're deferring, uh, some of those costs. So it's, it's just something to recognize that that's, that's the reality. Um, there's no magic behind it other than we go into that ne- next budget, whatever composition of the council, and the new council will be faced with the fact that, starting off, the, the budget will be higher before you even start discussions on, on the budget. And I only say that because that's, that's a reality of what we're dealing with. Councilor Hall.
I'm not sure it's a great idea that the city signed a five-year contract with this substantial increase. I'm not, I understand that you've had cost increase, I'm not bellyaching about you, the company, um, but when it triples, and I assume this five-year contract has escalation clauses in that, is that correct?
Yes, there's escalation clause in there based on the CPI.
And there's probably something to do with the fuel surcharge?
Yeah, I'd have to look back, but fuel being where it is, I think it was six dollars a gallon. So if it went over six dollars a gallon, then yes.
Not sure it's healthy for the city of Ellsworth to sign up for that substantial cost increase over a five-year period.
If I could just give you a little bit of backstory and history to the pricing structure.
Please.
So we actually took over this contract ten years ago. So there's a lot of reference to history in the room tonight, you know, ten years back. Uh, and within that, we renewed it once, uh, there was a, a five-year renewal that we did. It actually did go to bid, but it, we essentially just honored our price and continued at two-thirds of the CPI, which is what the city's escalator was. So for a decade, we've been priced at a market price that was ten years old, two-thirds of the CPI. So there's a lot of catch-up in there naturally. Uh, there have also been a few other bids that have taken place that you can see the bid results on where there were significantly higher bids than ours. Um, so certainly drastic changes in the last two years related to supply chain, equipment prices and so forth. But there's also this lag of where we entered the market down here ten years ago and where we are today. So just a little bit of background, that it's not just the recent changes. Uh, you could look at a shorter term, but similar to that conversation about Bangor with a ten-year term, the shorter the term, typically the higher the price. So that would be one other thing to consider there is that a shorter term would require the capital be spread out over even less time. So there could be an impact there on the price side of things. So just, just a little backstory to, to where we got to where we are now. It isn't just the most recent changes that we're all facing.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the, the motion? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Item sixteen, council order number zero eight, one, five, zero, five, request of the wastewater superintendent to enter, to in, enter into an agreement for the High Street Pump Station project with Woodard and Kern. I do not know how you got up to sixteen and not twenty-six, but whatever, like.
I'll take it. I paid Tony. Um, okay, so this particular project is, um, involving the High Street Pump Station project. The High Street Pump Station is located behind Pizza Hut, um, in the core of our develop, our current largest commercial development district. Um, it's been, you know, experiencing increasing pressure given the expansion of Jackson Lab multiple times, the amount of apartments that are being built behind Global Beverage, proposed apartments that are looked, uh, looked at being built um, along the Route Three corridor, as well as the possible apartment complexes that are being proposed um, along the Route One corridor. Um, and so I identified this in the five-year capital plan as, I'd rather be proactive and get this station upgraded where it needs to be before it stops economic development because that's realistically what's gonna happen here. Um, everything from High Street up over the hill to. Everything from High Street up over the hill to where Walmart and Route 3 and Route 1, all of that comes through High Street Pump Station. And so that pump station is in danger of reaching capacity. And I'd rather not wait until it reaches capacity and then react. I'd rather be proactive. And so with that being said, Woodard and Curran, in their most recent request to the funding agencies in that $10.5 million package that they put together, had the High Street Pump Station in it. I was informed by Brandy from the DEP that we received a $2 million grant specifically for this project and Water Street, the Water Street Pump Station project that we're already in, in the process of doing. So that 200,000 was for the stormwater, as we mentioned earlier. And so we will fund whatever is left from the Water Street project from the overage when the price came in. And the rest of that money is earmarked for the High Street Pump Station. This proposal by Woodard and Curran will be paid out of that money. And also, we are on the final list for all of our congressional delegations' request, budget requests to have an earmark for this project specifically. Depending on who it comes from, if it's successful, we would end up with an additional either $1 million or $1.7 million, depending on who's earmarked. We would be successful at, you know, attaining. We won't know that, but for now, we have the $2 million. And so we need to get the engineering going on it. So that's why I'm here tonight, to try and move that process forward.
Counselor.
I'm just a little confused about the wording. So you're saying this engineering proposal would be funded out of that $2 million?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's called AARPA?
ARPA. I just put the...
But that's different from our ARPA.
Not the city ARPA funds.
This is a different kind of DEP's ARPA?
Yes, the state, the Department of Environmental Protection has allocated its own ARPA funds.
Okay, I understand.
That they were allowed to distribute, and so they elected to give us...
It's the money that you...
$2 million.
Two months ago.
Yep.
So it's free.
I guess I just want to reiterate one point that you made about High Street and the development. There, there's a lot of activity going on in that area and potentially over the next couple of years, tremendous activity which will all feed into the system.
Yeah.
So that's, it's, it has that, as you say, that that potential to really create some problems, and we don't know what we don't know, and we, we need to be able to understand that. And yes, it, it costs to do that, but it's a better time with this funding that we have. And I certainly understand that that's not dollars just miraculously, you know, available. It's paid for somewhere else, but it's not coming out of the city taxes. And if we delay this, it still will be an issue. There will be a, a problem, and we will have to spend the money at some point to do this work. There's, just no question about that.
Absolutely.
And so, given everything, it seems like this is the, a great time to move this forward and to get ahead of it and not end up in a situation where property taxes skyrocket because we're faced with a major problem that we didn't prepare for.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Ellsworth Wastewater Superintendent to approve the proposal from Woodard and Curran in the amount of $220,000 to be funded from the DEP's ARPA grant that the city has been awarded for this project.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 17, Request of the Economic Development Director and the City's Broadband Committee to move forward with Phase 2 of the Connect Main Authority Planning Grant Scope of Work, which will include a request for proposals and result in a broadband feasibility study. Further, request to consider designating at least one city council to participate in the RFP drafting and review process.
Good evening, councilors. Jana Richards, Economic Development Director. I'm here tonight on behalf of city staff that is on the broadband committee as well as the broadband committee itself. For those of you who don't know, the broadband committee was assembled almost a year and a half ago. We applied for and received a grant from Connect Main Authority. It's a planning grant, so it's a small grant to sort of understand, excuse me, our broadband needs and fiber needs within the city. We just completed Phase 1 of the deliverables that were listed in that grant application. And so on July 14th, we held a workshop with the city council, and I think about four, about four of you were there that evening. And we went through the different efforts and initiatives that the committee has undertaken in the past year and a half. One was the broadband survey. Another was a forum that we held, a public forum, as well as a series of stakeholder meetings that collected some data. And then finally, that all accumulated in a final draft of the Ellsworth Broadband Roadmap and Strategic Plan. We held a, a public input period, which closed the beginning of last week. In your packet, you'll see that we did receive some additional feedback. Most of it includes additional feedback on where we're just lacking solid internet connections throughout the city. So this evening, we're here to talk about some of the next steps of the committee. They align with the Phase 2 deliverables of that grant application with Connect Main Authority. The two big deliverables, and that would be to prepare a request for proposals, and it is our plan that that request for proposals would end up in a broadband feasibility study for the city, which would help us determine what sort of model we would maybe be looking at for any potential broadband expansion, as well as how much it's going to cost, which is the big question. So at the end of that workshop, it seemed like, you know, this was a consensus amongst the councilors and the committee members that were present that seemed like a logical next step to pursue. And so we're just looking for some formal direction from the council, which is why I'm here this evening, is to request that we have permission to move forward with a request for proposal. It's a non-committal request for proposal, so we'll just see what we get when we put it out there, and we'll be able to have that discussion probably through another workshop with the council. So the request is to move forward with the request for proposals and to hopefully have at least one counselor help us with the request for proposal process. Any questions for me?
I think that the committee's done really good work in terms of getting this process moving, and I think we all know, understand the, the importance of having good access, and it's important for business development, for just convenience, more and more people working from home, all of those issues. And we know that we have some challenges in that area. So moving this process along in this manner is, I think, is definitely a positive thing, and it, and it helps us as a city to know what possibilities there are and what that might look like without, you know, we're not just jumping into it and spending lots of money, we're getting the information to make an informed decision. So I think it's a good plan. Counselor Kaplan.
One of the things I had asked at the meeting is, are we married to solely going with broadband? Because in some areas, things like Starlink have equal, if not better, depending on what package you buy, high speed internet at a lower cost than fiber optics or broadband. And so is it possible that, once you get the RFPs, that we can incorporate maybe even a mix? Because some areas on, on the lakes, for example, may not get the proper signal from a Starlink, whereas other areas that have an open view could get those signals for a fraction of the cost as to doing the infrastructure itself.
I think, yes, we're not married to any proposal at this time, and I think we want to see what, what we will be proposed with so that we can have these discussions and, and move forward.
Move to approve the request of the Economic Development Director and City of Ellsworth Broadband Committee to move forward with the Phase 2 of the Connect Main Authority Planning Grant Scope of Work, which will include a request for proposals and result in a broadband feasibility study. Further, approve the designation of a city council to participate in the RFP drafting and review process.
Second.
A motion and a second. Counselor Kaplan.
Can I request that we maybe we make a friendly amendment to request for proposals and result in a broadband feasibility study and/or other alternatives with equal speed?
Yes, that's fine.
Yes, that's fine. And is there a counselor that's interested in being involved in this committee? You're, you're not eligible.
I think Jean should be, after what happened to you.
But I like that.
Just for clarity, the, the committee will do a lot of the work. It would really just be to share the draft with that counselor and ensure that it's, you know, on board with what the city's looking for.
She could sense no one was volunteering.
Just trying to like.
Counsel, Counsel Miller is volunteered.
I think whoever it is should be, you know, depending on how the next election goes, should be here long enough to see it through.
That's true, that's true. Okay, any further discussion? Council lines are very quiet. All those in favor? Unanimous.
So who, did we?
Counsel Miller.
Thank you.
Item 18, Request of the Economic Development Director and the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation to move forward with a request for proposals in order to update the city's business development and attraction plan. Further, request to consider designating at least one city council to participate in the RFP drafting and review process.
Good evening. So I'm here with members of the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation this evening. Michelle Beal is the chair, and Tony McKim is our treasurer. We're here this evening. So the city has a economic development and business attraction plan that was last updated in 2011. It helps identify some of the industries and uses for which Ellsworth is well suited, a better way of saying what businesses should we try to attract and retain here in the city. The plan also helps identify some programs to try to leverage or incentivize development within the city, and it's used to identify information to reach out and to draw those businesses. So we're here this evening to request that we update the city's 2011 business attraction plan. This came up, the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation has a subcommittee that's called the Business Development Committee. They help the city try to reach out to prospective businesses that may want to locate here. The information that is necessary to try to attract or retain businesses here is fairly outdated. As you can imagine, 2011 was over 10 years ago at this point, and there's been a lot of change, not only within the economy, but within the city itself. So we are looking to update the plan with a lot of the information that's already included in that plan, but just to update it, as well as to enhance that plan further. So you can see in the memo that was prepared for this packet that some of the areas that we would like to enhance or develop greater would be to develop a greater understanding of targeted business sectors and subsectors that offer opportunities which Ellsworth has an advantage and opportunity to leverage here. Evaluate the availability and competitiveness of key sites in Ellsworth and understands areas of opportunity and areas to be targeted for growth and the types of growth to be targeted in the short term and long term within those areas. So we've done a lot of talk tonight about infrastructure and the fact that we need to upgrade a lot of our infrastructure and look at future development, but the piece that's missing in this is what kind of development will be coming to those areas that we need to base some of the modeling on. And this will help us with that, with, with figuring out where there should be expanded infrastructure, where those improvements should be made. We know that the High Street corridor obviously already has a solid core of development, but if there is future development to happen there, what are we looking for? And then another piece that, you know, is, is somewhat lacking at this point with the current plan is a review of our local practices and, and policies in support of economic development. And, you know, not only for my department, but for city staff to review that and then bring any changes or proposals to this council if they would help to stimulate the economy. And the final piece that wasn't really included much in the 2011 plan was an analysis on the residential market, which not only would help bring new workforce into the city, but would help to sustain a lot of the, the workforce that we need for our, our current businesses within the city at this time. So at this time, we are estimating the cost of this update to be somewhere between $50,000 to $55,000, but we don't know particularly how much it is going to cost. So we're proposing that we would move forward with the request proposals to find out what, what the cost would finally be, but we are proposing that there would be a funding share between the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation and the City of Ellsworth, particularly the economic development department's budget. So our next steps were to propose this proposal to this full council at this meeting, request for permission to move forward with a draft RFP, discuss if there is a counselor with an interest in participating in that RFP drafting and review process, create a committee to review the proposals, potentially select a firm, and bring it back to the council for the bidding cost share approval, and then hopefully engage and begin that planning
Counselor.
This seems really important to me and interesting to me, but I wonder, would it be better, given the energy that's going to have to go into the comprehensive plan, and given that this sort of feels to me like it fits under the comprehensive plan, like to do that first and then do this?
Actually, it's, it's sort of a reverse process. So this could take the place of a piece of the, so each comprehensive plan will have 10 different elements, one of them being the economy. So this plan would essentially be referred to and cited within that, in the comprehensive plan. The other piece is that if this makes recommendations and our comprehensive plan comes first and starts to zone or do any rezoning of certain areas, and this comes back with recommendations and they don't fit together, that's not a good thing, because then we're going to, we're going to come back to the planning board and potentially to the council to ask to rezone to fit the recommendations of this plan. So it actually is important to be able to get this plan done first so that the comprehensive plan could, could contemplate or incorporate this into it.
Yeah, exactly. It says right there that the findings will be incorporated into the com, into the update to the comprehensive plan and will be used to make public and private investment decisions.
Right. So, I mean, there's other factors that go into zoning aside from economic development, but we want that to be a pretty strong factor when we think about building out the city.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Economic Development Director and the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation to move forward with a request for proposals in order to update the city's business development and action plan. Further, approve the designation of a city counselor, not me, to participate in the RFP and review process.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. I would be interested if...
I'd also be interested.
Fight over it, two of you.
So any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 19, Request of the Economic Development Director and the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation to consider eliminating or modifying the city's interest in a 100-foot right-of-way to the right of the cul-de-sac at the end of Commerce Park and over Tax Map 42, Law 8-1, per city council minutes from March 16, 2015, given existing conditions on that lot and the abutting lot and continue... and fifteen, given existing conditions on that lot and the abutting lot and contingent on the sale of the abutting lot to Frenchman Bay Conservancy.
Sorry, I know that was a mouthful. There's a lot of information there. Okay, so I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I possibly can. So Ellsworth Business Development Corporation was established almost eight years ago now, I want to say, and their mission is to help aid the city in economic and business development initiatives. In two thousand and fifteen, when they were first getting started, the city transferred over three properties within the Commerce Park, two smaller lots, which are just, just over an acre in size, and then the remainder land, which is about eleven to twelve acres. At that time, there were two, two major differences then than we know now. So one of them was that the abutting property to the south, which if you have your map in front of you, it's, I labeled it there as map forty-two lot nine, that piece of property, which abuts the high school property, was being considered for, for growth and development. And some of the considerations on that property were the proposed Acadia Arena proposal, if any of you remember that, as well as a new and expanded Hancock County Technical Center campus, since it was so close to the high school. Recent development was that a local land trust actually acquired a grant to purchase that property with plans for the majority of the property to be placed into conservation, including the area directly abutting the Commerce Park. So at the time, there was the hundred-foot right-of-way, and I think the exact quote was that the City of Ellsworth would like to retain a hundred-foot right-of-way to the right of the cul-de-sac for a future possible growth in that area, and that the city would need to negotiate exactly where that would be located. So at this point, if there, if that land is put into conservation, as it is expected would happen if that land trust acquires the property, then there would no longer be future possible growth potential on, on that lot. So that's the first piece of information that's changed over time. The second was just this year and pretty much almost a month ago, Ellsworth Business Development Corporation paid for a wetlands report and map of the twelve acres so that they could find out what area was best suitable for development on the property. You have that map in front of you as well, hopefully, within the packet, and you can see that there's about an acre of upland, which would be an area that would be suitable for development in the exact same vicinity as where that hundred-foot right-of-way would, if it were to move forward, would cut through to get to the right of the cul-de-sac. So given these two new recent developments, the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation is requesting that the city consider either eliminating their interest in that hundred-foot right-of-way, if the sale of the map forty-two lot nine moves forward with that local land trust acquiring it, or modifying the right-of-way to a size between around thirty to fifty feet, which could accommodate a road or a utility easement, whatever was the intent to go behind, within that right-of-way. So I know that's a lot. I'm here to take any questions if you have them, but I think that that's the request overall.
So I guess my hesitancy about it is, there's a lot of what-ifs in this scenario, and I think it also pushes in the direction of saying, if the land becomes conserved, that's one result, and if we go ahead and do this, that's probably the only option at that point. And it strengthens that proposal. We don't know what's going to happen with Frenchman Bay, whether they're going to purchase it or not. There could be another developer that comes in, and if we give up that now without having all of that, then we're really jumping ahead as a city in terms of limiting the ability for the city to utilize that resource. So I just, it just seems like it's a little bit early to be doing that, and what I'm not really clear on is if we don't do that, how, what's the, what's the consequence in terms of?
Yeah, so if, if you don't do that, so the, the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation has not listed this property for sale since it was deeded over to them in two thousand and fifteen, and they're gearing up to be able to do that. And so to be able to list a piece of property for sale, you need to know how much of it is developable, which is why the wetland study and the map was, was conducted. One other thing that would sort of, you know, for marketability purposes, as well as for coming up with a listing price, would be the fact that you either have a right-of-way over your property or you don't at this time. And if you do have the right-of-way, then that's a different scenario for somebody who's in the real estate business to have to come up with a price tag and the marketability for that property than, than if it didn't have the right-of-way.
But what, what happens if that land doesn't get purchased by Frenchman's Bay and the city, that land becomes an opportunity to develop and there's no right-of-way to support development in, on that property?
Sure. So, so the motion says contingent on the sale of the abutting lot to Frenchman Bay Conservancy. You could go further and say, and that it's, that that land is put into a conservation easement or put into conservation, or some, some sort of condition that, that the elimination of the right-of-way or the change of size in that right-of-way only happens if that sale goes forward with Frenchman Bay Conservancy. Now, that would have to be something that Ellsworth Business Development Corporation would have to take into consideration and say, okay, we have to wait to see if this sale either goes forward or does not move forward. And then, so they have to wait in time to be able to see if that comes through to fruition or not, but at least it gives them that answer at this point to know whether or not there would be that right-of-way there or not.
Counselor.
The EBDC has owned this land for seven years now, since two thousand and fifteen?
Yes.
So what's the sudden rush to, to extinguish the right-of-way?
Well, so what, to be completely honest, what ended up happening was that about, I don't know, a couple of years after it was deeded over, the Economic Development Director, my former Economic Development Director left, and so there was momentum there, and then the momentum sort of shifted. And now we're back trying to be able to move this forward, and it was never listed. And so at this point, it seems like the market is right to be able to list it. There was interest in the property this past winter. We want to, in combination with the, that Business Development Committee, be able to attract a business to be able to come to that property and create jobs and, you know, do, put forth what the initiative was, or the purpose was behind deeding that property over in the first place.
If, if there was a potential buyer, wouldn't it be better to have that buyer involved in this decision rather than us making it for them? They may very well have a different opinion. They, they might be happy with a seventy-five-foot right-of-way that the city has. I agree with Council Hamilton. I think we're jumping the gun here quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, just in terms of like, from the experience with the last business that was interested, they wanted a price on, on the land. And without having the full wetland study and without understanding how much of the land would be impacted by a right-of-way, how much money they would have to provide to the DEP to create a road to go through there, all these unknowns, the least that we could, or Ellsworth Business Development Corporation could do would be to set a price based on what the now known is, which is the amount of developable land that's there and whether or not it has a right-of-way or an easement over the property or not.
Whether or not it has a right-of-way, a potential buyer could have confidential discussions with the city and present their what-ifs.
I suppose, I mean, that is one case scenario, but if we're no longer the owner of this property, could they not negotiate directly with Ellsworth Business Development Corporation and not the city? I mean, we have an interest in property for a future growth area. If there is no more future growth area, it's almost like we, we don't have a right anymore to be able to retain that because there's, if there is no future growth on that abutting lot, then the purpose that's stated within the council minutes no longer exists.
And that's, so, no, 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 I've already spoken.
So am I, am I missing something here, or the fact that there's a right-of-way in existence may deter eighty percent of the potential buyers?
So it's not currently in existence. It's to be negotiated at a later date, so.
But doesn't it drive the market value of this down? It's unquestioned, it's questionable, so you really don't know what you're selling, and that could push.
Absolutely.
That could push some potential people away because of this.
Absolutely. I mean, that's, that was the point of paying for the wetland study, was to know exactly what was there so that somebody, it's the expectation of that developer coming in and saying, okay, it's my expectation that I'm paying for, you know, four acres of actually usable land, and that to be able to connect some of these, I'm probably going to have to get a permit from the DEP and spend some money to be able to do. So now the picture becomes clearer for a developer who walks through the door. So we want to make that expectation and that picture as clear as possible, so if there is a hundred-foot right-of-way, okay, we need to show that or at least work with the city at this point to determine where exactly that's going to be located. If it can be reduced in size, that's another thing. And if it can be eliminated because there is no future potential growth on that abutting property, then that, you know, can all be spelled out for any future potential buyer.
So I'll, in the beginning, you mentioned HCTC. So is that not a viable place for them at all, and that's why we're going to sell it?
So we're not, we don't own that property.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that property is owned by a private landowner who is expressed interest in selling that property to the land trust at this point. There was discussion years ago on that being a great location for HCTC, and I do think that that, the landowner, the current landowner, would have interest in that. They expressed to us, is that something that you think is going to happen in the next, you know, couple of years? They asked about the feasibility study that took place, and it is our understanding that the recommendation be that the HCTC campus stay where it is located for cost-benefit purposes, and to, to move that campus would be substantially higher cost. Is that, okay, just want to be sure.
But I just want to be clear that we're talking about two separate areas of the same piece of property. So the piece of property is four hundred acres?
No, forty, about.
No, 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 the entire, the entire property that Frenchman's Bay is looking to purchase.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
It's about, it's about four hundred acres. In our conversations with Frenchman's Bay, they've agreed to section out about thirty-five to forty acres for future development, and that's the property that's near Lejog Street, which is the property that HCTC looked at in the feasibility study for a potential campus location. The property that we're talking about here with this right-of-way is on the complete opposite end of this, of that private four hundred acres, and that, by all accounts, Frenchman's Bay intention with that portion of the property is to put it in, in conservation. So the right-of-way that we're talking about would access that portion of the property, not the forty acres over by Lejog Street. So we're on opposite ends.
And I'm, I'm okay with the modifying in terms of working to relocate and try to make it as accommodating as possible to make the lot attractive, and I think that's reasonable. I, the, the part of eliminating it, I have a problem with at this point because Frenchman's Bay, it could be four years, and no buyer is going to come in and say, well, based on this, I'm going to put down money and purchase it. There's still going to be a problem with that. So if we can modify it, make it more attractive, and then if Frenchman's Bay purchases it, I think some future council probably would say, yeah, we can eliminate it outright. But to give that up now without knowing the outcome of that, I don't think eliminating it's in the best interest of the city. Modifying it, I think, is a reasonable approach.
So would the idea then be that maybe Ellsworth Business Development Corporation draws up a proposal and then brings that back to be voted on by this council?
Or can we just make the motion that it changes from a hundred feet to thirty to fifty feet, or no?
I mean, you could do that, but I also think just for purposes, I think you'd want to come back with a map of.
Yeah. If, if, if we could reduce it, though, it would make it easier, because a hundred-foot right-of-way is massive. I mean, if you look at the Beachland Road, it's two eleven-foot lanes, it's two four-foot shoulders, and then it's probably got six or eight feet for drainage on either side. So you're at, what, thirty-six to forty feet?
Yeah.
That's the Beachland Road. So, I, I mean, a hundred-foot right-of-way is, is just, it's massive for anything. I don't even know if Ellsworth has, well, yes, DOT has it for one A, has a hundred-foot right-of-way. Would, it just isn't a need for that in that small area. So if you, if we could reduce it to forty feet and then let us draw up something to bring back to the council to get approved, so, because the other piece of this is, I'm sorry, you want me to come up there?
If you had really been brief, I would have let you.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. Michelle Beal, I'm the chair for EBDC. If, if, the, the biggest problem with this is that it's not like one big piece of land that is developable because you've got the wetlands in between there. So trying to take a hundred feet, a hundred-foot right-of-way over to that side property takes up really one of the best pieces of property that we could actually sell and bring someone in for. So if we could reduce the size of that and then come back to you with a proposal, I don't know how long Frenchman's Bay Conservancy is planning. I know they did get funded for it, but if we could come back to something, a proposal for you, that would be great, but to know that you will allow us to reduce it to like forty feet, that would be great.
Counselor.
I have another question. I was thinking about like, why we kept that right-of-way to begin with because, and that was so that we would be able to maintain roads if there were developments that were connecting to each other back there.
Counselor probably has the best history of.
As I recall, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, the original proposal was for seventy-five feet that night at the council meeting, and we enlarged it to twenty-five feet because we didn't, we weren't sure of what kind of development would move in there and whether it would, whether we would need more width for communication and underground So we made it a hundred feet, but I don't, it wasn't, it wasn't a number that was cast in concrete. And also.
It wasn't the minutes?
Yeah.
But I think it was more, sorry.
No, it's okay. The map that was part of the packet from that evening actually showed just like a rough sketch of something that was seventy-five feet, like you said, but then the minutes reflected a hundred feet. So we have, like legally, I think we'd have to go by what's in the minutes versus the sketch that was.
The original map was seventy-five, and then it was at the, it was here at the table. It was council forty, if I recall, that for those reasons, we upped it to a hundred feet. But it, it isn't anything that we're, that we're married to. If a developer comes in and shows the need that, that we only need a fifty-foot right-of-way, or whatever the number may be, then we certainly would be open to that. But I, I really would be hesitant to reduce it and then have the EBDC come back with a proposal rather than the other way around. I, I don't think there's, there's any hesitation here at the table tonight to reduce it down the road. Then, I detect some tonight because if we don't have a proposal, like I said, I think we're putting the cart before the horse.
Counselor.
So sorry, I only asked half my question because I was trying to figure out what the historical need for the right-of-way was, and I
And I wonder, now that the wetlands map is made, what would we ever, if Frenchman's Bay does or does not buy that land, can anyone picture a reason that we would need that? Or does the wetland map mean, like, there's nothing to build up that way, so you're never gonna need it?
Right, I mean, the only thing that I could foresee would be if Frenchman's Bay Conservancy wanted a small right-of-way to put, let's say, a trailhead or parking area for, like, if they're able to build some sort of trails out that way, if that's part of their plan. If that's the case, like, part of our discussion at the Ellsworth Development Corporation meeting was, they could negotiate right with Ellsworth Business Development Corporation to get that right-of-way. You know, I don't know why the city would need to be part of that negotiation at that point. So I think that would be the only case scenario that if I, if they were to, to purchase the property, that I could foresee happening, why they would want access there.
Yeah, so my inclination would be to move for your suggestion, because I can't see a reason to keep this right-of-way without some idea of what we might use it for. Should I make a motion, or no? So move to approve the request of the Economic Development Director in Ellsworth Business Development Corporation to eliminate or modify the city's interest in a one-hundred-foot right-of-way to the right of the cul-de-sac at the end of Commerce Park and over tax map forty-two lot eight-one per city council minutes from March sixteen, two thousand fifteen, given existing conditions on that lot and the abutting lot and contingent on the sale of a abutting lot to Frenchman's Bay Conservancy.
Have a motion.
I'll second that.
Second the discussion.
I'd like to add a friendly amendment to that, the very last part of it, contingent on the sale of the abutting lot to Frenchman's Bay Conservancy, and that it would be put, the land would be put into conservancy status. I know that that certainly is their intention, but sometimes intentions change at the last minute.
I guess I don't accept the friendly amendment, just because I think that's on Frenchman's Bay to figure out, if they buy that land, how they wanna manage.
So Councilor Kaplan, and then Councilor O'Halloran.
I'm just wondering, which one are we doing, eliminating or modifying?
Okay, I will, friendly amendment myself, to just say eliminate, because that's what I meant.
I'll second that. Am I, if I could just ask this one question, does anybody have a number of the value of this property without a right-of-way and with a right-of-way? Any guess? I realize it's wild guess, but there must be some number of value here.
So if, depending on who, who would want it, on also depending on, again, with this right-of-way, of whether we're selling three lots, or we could, you can go to the DEP and kinda join the lot, invite, what do they call it?
You mean the upland areas?
Yeah, yeah. And, and so the DEP will allow you to disturb a certain amount of wetlands, if, if you must, or something. So it all depends on what it's going to be, but the, I, I can't say a, a value for that, only that it would take away a good portion of what is, that, that you could develop, you know, and I think that's the best way to say it. So it, it will deplete substantially, because it, it happens to be also the, the piece that joins the rest of the, the business park. It's a great piece that that would, that would be interrupted by that. Because you can't give, I, I don't think you really would be giving anybody a right-of-way through wetlands, because it's, it's a pretty useless right-of-way for them, because they, you can't use it even for utilities.
So is it safe to say that it's possible to sell this quicker and fill this with a business by eliminating this right-of-way?
It, it definitely removes a huge hurdle, yes.
But it's, it's contingent upon the sale of the property to Frenchman's Bay, so we're still in this situation where you ha, you may have a buyer, but they're not going to wanna close the deal until that sale goes through. And that's why I'm more comfortable with having you modify it now and see where that sale goes, and, and not having the city end up in a situation where we lose all options for that property back there. Because that four hundred acre, that's not ruled out of development. That, that study that was done was on that property that was given to EBDC. It's not the entire property. So we don't know how much is developed, how much can be developed behind. And that's what the original purpose of the right-of-way was, that if that land became developed, that there was access to promote more businesses in that area. So Frenchman's Bay does not purchase that property, and some other developer wants to purchase that land, and they do, without a right-of-way, it's landlocked, and they're not going to purchase it. So it's to that point of, yeah, we can develop the small parcel, but if we give up our complete rights as a city to support that, we might be limiting opportunities for the future. And that's where I would prefer that we wait to, to see what happens, so that we don't close that, those doors. Councilor Kaplan.
I would be in favor of a friendly amendment to modify it to a forty-five to fifty-foot right-of-way, which leaves all options open for now.
Modify it, but what about the sale to Frenchman's Bay, the contingency?
I think that if they want it, they will buy it, but why would we want to limit it to just them? What if there's a?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I, what if there's another interested party that would like to purchase it?
I'd just be in favor of modifying it, not, not contingent on anything, just modifying it tonight.
So right now, we have a, a motion and a second on the motion to eliminate it. And I haven't heard that that's changed, so at that, so at this point, that's what we're, we're still voting on. If you're ready for that vote, we can take that vote. Any further discussion? So all in favor of eliminating the, the right-of-way? All opposed. Motion fails.
Can we re-present the motion with approving the request of the Economic Development Director and the Ellsworth Business Development Corporation to modify the city's interest in a one-hundred-foot right-of-way to the right of the cul-de-sac at the end of Commerce Park and over map, tax map forty-two lot eight-dash-one per city council meetings from March sixth, March sixteenth, two thousand, twenty fifteen, giving existing conditions on that lot and the abutting lot, not contingent on the sale of the abutting lot to Frenchman's Bay Conservancy. Can we do it that way?
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Councilor Hanson.
Is that, I mean, you guys were the ones requesting this. Is that useful to you, or would you rather come back with a different proposal to us, or rather wait until after the Frenchman's Bay sale does or does not go through?
So if I understand, so you said not contingent on anything, but reducing it to forty? That, it would, it would help us. And it's not that we don't want a right-of-way at all. I mean, because it, it's our mission for the council. I mean, the council created us to help create business in, in the city of Ellsworth. So, I mean, if we negotiate, or have the ability to negotiate a right-of-way with a neighboring property, and that's a developer, a developer and not a conservation easement, which removes development from that property. I mean, we're more than happy to do that. That's what you have given us, you know, as, as our job as EBDC, to do something like that. So it's not, it, it's not having a right-of-way, it's having a hundred-foot right-of-way. That makes it terrible. So we can work within that. If we could come back to you with a proposal of how we would, how we would see to be able to work between what we're trying to do with the property for the city and what could happen with a right-of-way for the, for the neighboring property, that would be more than acceptable to us.
But if we approve this the way Councilor Kaplan just worded it, do you have to come back to us, or it's just set, then it's on, how many feet did you say?
Forty.
Forty-five. Then you don't need to come back to us?
We should, because I think the, the original, back in two thousand fifteen, said that the council would negotiate with EBDC where the right-of-way is. So, I mean, we can keep that piece if, if you, if you'd like us to. Or you could just leave it to us to negotiate with the neighboring.
And where it's not contingent upon the sale to Frenchman's Bay Conservancy, if a business developer wanted to go in there, having that right-of-way would still allow for utilities, whether it be above ground, underground, whatever, and for access for emergency vehicles, city vehicles.
It allows you to act now as well.
So, just to clarify, we're not, as a city, giving up the, the requirement that there's a right-of-way. We're just modifying it to forty feet, and we're asking to have that presented in terms of whatever that looks like. And so that's what we're doing. We're just shrinking it down and giving the freedom to, to do that.
And opens up who the potential buyer could be.
Yeah, and down the road, if, depending on who it is, it could be even eliminated at some future agreement with the city. So it's not left up to EBDC solely. We're still, as a city, requiring that right-of-way. Councilwoman Jet.
How did we arrive at forty feet? Are we just grasping at numbers?
Based on the, the right-of-way at Commerce Park is thirty feet. The right-of-way typical utility easements are fifty to sixty, but it's somewhere between thirty-three and sixty. So forty feet seems reasonable.
I'm sorry, you said thirty-three and sixty, six-oh?
Yes, so the typical utility easements are approximately fifty to sixty feet. And conversely, the right-of-way at High Street is a hundred feet. They don't need a hundred feet. And Commerce Park, it's thirty-three feet. This is slightly larger than that. So forty seems reasonable, and she said that forty feet would work for her.
But will forty feet work for any, any buyer, potential buyer down the road? I think forty is, is cutting close.
They'd have to overcome the thirty-three-foot right-of-way in Commerce Park till you get to that property to begin with, so really, they only really need a thirty-three-foot right-of-way, because they're not gonna be able to expand bigger than what's already there.
Than the existing one.
Without expanding that.
Depending on what went on that property.
They still gotta go through Commerce Park to get there.
That's correct. But I'm not looking to hamstring any potential development, whether it's one, one person slash company, or three or four. And, and again, if, if, if it, if five years down the road, if forty-five, fifty, fifty-five feet, whatever, turned out to be unneeded, then it can be reduced again. If, if we're going to cut the, the width of the right-of-way, then I really wouldn't be in favor of going less than fifty percent. To cut it sixty percent, I think is drastic for right now, because we don't know what we don't know.
Is that a friendly amendment?
That's the issue.
Right, because you already made the motion.
Right, we have a motion.
So is that a friendly amendment?
I would, I'll make that a friendly amendment.
For which one, fifty or sixty?
Fifty, to go fifty percent.
I can live with that.
And who seconded?
I did, and I can too.
So that's the motion, is to modify it to fifty feet.
Not contingent on the sale.
Not contingent on the sale.
Further discussion. All in favor of the motion to re, to modify it down to fifty feet and not make it contingent on the sale to Frenchman's Bay Conservancy?
Thank you. So we'll come back then with a proposal anyway, just to show you what we come up with and move from there. Thank you.
Item twenty, remote participation ordinance discussion and potential action, sponsored by Councilor Hanson.
Okay, that's me. I had COVID, I had COVID last month, and was perfectly fine, but at home and could not participate in the meeting. And I just think the wheels of government move slowly enough, and things like coronavirus pandemics may happen and are out of our control. And so in the year two thousand twenty-two, as many other communities have, I think it makes sense to have a remote participation policy. Tony very, very kindly found that put our little city thing on the top of the one, this one, which is just, comes right from the main municipal association. I can talk more, but I don't really think I need to. I just think it would be worth while, when people can participate, this seems like a reasonable way to do it, and it's endorsed by the main municipal association, so.
I will just add that our planning board and appeals board have both adopted their own remote participation policies.
Leave the school?
The school board.
The school board has as well, yeah.
I, I appreciate you bringing it forward. I think it's, it is reasonable, and it allows, there's, there's a lot of reasons, and it limits it, too. It's not just like, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to, I'm gonna stay at home, so that it, it just allows for that continuity. And we've been in situations where we've agreed to defer some conversations and decisions because we, we didn't have everybody in. So I don't, I don't think it, it does anything that's negative. I think, and, and I don't see it being used excessively either.
Right, and the fact that it says in there that the chair, you know, that I would call you and say, hey, I have COVID, like, you sort of have to approve the reason, which I think adds a layer of making it not just, my dinner just got ready at five thirty-five.
Councilor Kaplan.
I think this comes from the school board vote specifically, and, or the vote on the school budget, where one voice was able to override the vote. So I understand your concern. However, I think that this is something that should be addressed at the city charter level. I don't think that it should be just us voting on it. I think that it should have public participation, because if something is important enough to be voted on, it's important enough to show up. And you, we specifically discuss quorums in the city charter, so I don't think that this is really an appropriate thing for me, so. That particular day was a rarity, that one person overrode because we didn't have to be quorum. I, I don't think that remote participation would serve our constituents well.
I mean, do you think that that was one moment that got me thinking about this? And it actually did cost the taxpayers, I don't know, eight thousand dollars, however much it costs.
Five thousand, but I've worked for free for three years now, so still ahead.
Still, like, that's a cost to the taxpayer that we could avoid by doing this. And then, but even last time, we, we were planning on talking about the charter, when I wasn't here, because I had COVID, we were gonna talk about that whole charter question. That got pushed forward to this meeting. So there was, it's more than just that. There, there have been multiple things that have gotten slowed down and pushed back. And I think if our lawyer told us that this was a big enough thing that it needed to go to a charter revision, I would accept that, but it seems like most municipalities are just adopting it as an ordinance, so it doesn't seem worth all that trouble if we could just pass it tonight.
I think changing a policy over sour grapes is not a very good idea, personally. And as far as costing the taxpayers five thousand extra, they changed the budget, and we came out ahead there, and this particular counselor has worked for free for the last three years, have not taken a dime from the city, so you're ahead there as well.
Can I make a motion for my own thing, or I should wait and let somebody else do it?
No, you, nothing prohibits you from making a motion.
Could you have something you want to say?
There'll be more discussion, too, as always.
Then I guess I would just move to approve this remote participation policy.
I second it.
Yeah, the motion is second, further discussion. Seeing no other discussion. Seeing no other discussion. Have a motion to approve a remote ordinance. All those in favor? All those opposed? Four to three, motion passes.
Motion passes?
Wait.
Yeah, four to three.
Four to three. Dean voted, you voted in favor, right? You voted in favor, you voted, and I voted in favor. Item twenty-one, establish a rule which prohibits councils from usurping existing procedures for commenting on issues that have not been placed on the agenda. This is a item I sponsored. And in short, the council meeting is, has, by statute, it it exists for council business, that for the elected body to conduct the business of the city. And there's a process and procedures associated with that, including how does, how do we, as counselors, when we're here, we're representing in our role as council. And we include in our process the opportunity for the public to speak to us. And they can comment, the public can comment on any issue that's on the, that's whether it's on the agenda or not, to present issues to the council. The council is prohibited from adding agenda items unless there's a vote and a process and procedures. And because there's there's the requirement that we post all of our topics in advance, so the public has the opportunity to weigh in on those subject matters if they so choose. When we have members of this body going down to speak from the podium during the citizens' public comment, that is bypassing the process and invites, I believe, a a problem for us as a council, whereby items can be put on the agenda and discussed in a way that's not following the the proper protocol for putting items on the agenda. And if we take it to the absurd level, but one that is very potential, if every one of us decided to, every meeting, go down and speak as a citizen to the council for which we are members, we are really creating a situation where we're going to start having discussions about issues that are not on the agenda and should not be discussed. And therefore, I think we have to have a rule as a council, as one of our rules, that you you speak as a counselor and you have the opportunity to speak from this table as a counselor. That's what we're here for. And unless there is a conflict, if you are conflicted out of a discussion, you remove yourself as a counselor by rule, and you have an opportunity to participate as a citizen on that matter, that would still be acceptable. But when we're here representing in our role as a council, we should follow the intended purpose of that and not circumvent that process by speaking from the podium. So I think that's what I'm proposing, is that we we adopt a rule that puts that, codifies that and prevents that from happening so that we don't end up in a scenario where we put the council at risk of violating the parameters of the responsibility around agenda items. Counselor O'Halloran.
I'm the subject. I would like to just point out the fact that I would ask this council not to strip me of my citizens' rights. I did not forfeit my citizenship when I was elected to this board, nor have I ever spoken about an agenda item from the podium. Speaking from this table is difficult, even on agenda items, because my friend here moves to table indefinitely any agenda item that I would like to talk about. So this board approves or votes on that, that leaves me no choice but to be a citizen. I have never spoken about any agenda item from there. So I would encourage this board not to strip me of my citizenship.
So I just want to clarify that what I'm talking about is not about agenda items. That's the problem. It's talking because we have that opportunity to speak. That's the formal process. When something's on the agenda, it's publicized, and then we have the opportunity to speak on it. If we, as counselors, go to the podium and raise issues that are not on the agenda, that's a problem. That creates an opportunity whereby we are circumventing the the public notice process. And there have been several items that have been put out there into the public realm that should not have been put out in that manner by a a council member. So that, I'm not talking about agenda items. I'm talking about those items that are not on the agenda. And it's ripe, when you take it to the absurd level of every one of us then doing that, that's when it comes very clear that we are really violating it. Counselor O'Halloran.
We're all citizens here. We're all citizens here, and none of us gave up our citizenship to take this job. I've been very clear that I don't speak as a as a counselor. I speak as a citizen. I just want the record to understand that.
Counselor Blanchett.
One can speak as a citizen, certainly, but it doesn't take away the fact that they're still the councilor. I'm shocked by the fact, hearing the two counselors speak. Counselor Hamilton keeps saying, "We, we, we," knowing that this is a group that was elected to serve the citizens of Ellsworth. And yet, when Counselor O'Halloran is speaking, it's, "I, I, I." This is not an "I" group. This is a "we" group. And we all can speak our opinion on any agenda item. And I want to keep it a "we" group.
Counselor Cap.
I certainly understand your point. I also understand your point. I would err on the side of freedom of speech on the First Amendment. The city has had already some very embarrassing things with First Amendment and other elected bodies, so much so that we've paid out court settlements. And I don't see the problem with allowing him to remove himself as a counselor from this desk and speak at the podium tonight. He he did, he, I don't remember what was you talked about. You complimented somebody. So I I don't see the issue if he wants to separate himself as a counselor from the desk and he identifies where he lives, that he's a citizen of Ellsworth, that he owns a business in Ellsworth, and just does it that way if he's not bringing up anything contentious or things along those lines. I don't see why we would want to deprive him as a citizen of his First Amendment right, the freedom of speech, in whatever manner there is.
So, one, I don't want to make this about Counselor O'Halloran. He's been the one speaking. I look at it as the potential and the landslide that it could create. So I, this is not just about Counselor O'Halloran. But I I disagree with the comments that have been made. I think he's made some comments that do rise to the council level. I also, freedom of speech, absolutely, everybody's got the right to speak. However, we also follow rules. You don't have the right to just do anything you want under the guise of freedom of speech. And some of the people that keep throwing that up as as a threat, if you don't let me speak, we will do this. This is not about preventing people from speaking. This is about the rules of being a member of this council and what the law says. And the law talks about setting agenda items and public notice.
Point of order.
Wait, what's a point of order?
Well, that means I can interrupt.
No, no, you 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 can interrupt with a point of order, but there's a, there's something you want to object to in terms of procedure.
Yes, do you have a copy of those those specific rules? Because there was nothing in the packet with identifying those specific rules.
What specific rules?
You said that it's against the law. I'd like to see.
The the issue in terms of public notice is a law. We can, we have to, and the clerk can attest to this, we have to publicly put out the agenda. And in fact, we cannot just add an agenda without a full vote of the council and having that that majority rule on that. It has to be unanimous. So there's procedures around that. This, what I'm proposing is a rule that keeps us clear of that so we don't violate it. It's not a matter of depriving anybody of their right, freedom of speech. Everybody here has more opportunity to speak on issues of the city than do the public. So I don't buy that. That's a ridiculous argument to not have a rule.
Does he have the right to bring up the same comments if he's sitting here?
He has the right to address any agenda item. We all have the right to address agenda items as we have been consistent. Counselor O'Halloran.
And again, I have stated this in the past, and I'll state it again. This table is a discussion for agenda items. Citizens' comments are not on the agenda.
So let's put it in in this context. Can three of us, can four of us be in the hallway and have a discussion about any issue under, because we have a right, we we declare ourselves citizens? Can we do that?
No, because that represents a quorum.
Correct. So I would, I'm going to move a motion effective immediately and remaining in force until changed by a majority vote of the council. Councillors will not be permitted to leave the council table for the purpose of addressing the council as a member of the public. The chair is prohibited from recognizing counsel who is requesting to speak from the public podium. This rule does not apply when a council member has been removed from a discussion due to a conflict of interest.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
Just also, I just wanted to add to, you are a private citizen, right? But you're not because you're an elected official. So now you're a public figure. And you can't just just do anything, you know, that you want because you are an elected official and you're a public figure. You're also a citizen, but but you're also a public figure.
Counselor O'Halloran.
I may be a member of this board. But when I speak, I've been clear, if you look at the records, that I am speaking as a citizen of this city, and I don't speak about agenda items. So I would encourage this board not to deny me what you're allowing every other citizen to do.
Counselor Hanson.
It makes me think of my mother who used to say, "Those to whom much is given, much is expected." So I think that I'm sort of adding on to what Bob said, which is, we are citizens, but we've kind of taken on this responsibility and also this honor to serve the city. And we have to put that, I put that above my own personal rights or desires, like I'm here instead of eating my dinner at five fifty-five in my house. And I speak in a certain way when I'm up here because of the role of being a city counselor. So to me, it does make sense for us to follow, to hold ourselves to a higher standard in some way and to commit ourselves to the role that we've accepted for the time period that we've accepted this.
Counselor O'Halloran.
I would like to think that I have offered professional discussions at this table and courteous professional discussions as a citizen. And again, I would encourage this board not to strip me of my citizenship.
So, Counselor Blanchett.
So if somebody on this council has something that they want to mention, as Mr. O'Halloran has in the past, what, where would, would they make an agenda item just in order to say thank you to the fire department for coming in?
Don't worry, it's going to get tabled, so we couldn't talk about it.
I guess I'm.
You you can do that now. I mean, that that's, we have plenty of ample opportunity. I did that tonight, if you remember. During, when I was presenting awards, I took a moment to thank the city employees, and I expanded on that. We have committee reports where we have great latitude to be able to expand on that. But if we're talking about city business, this meeting is a formal process. We've agreed to be, it's just like a board meeting for corporations. It exists for a reason, for the council to conduct the city of, the business of the city. And with that, there are rules that we follow and we agree to. That's what we're here for. We're not here to to stand down there and be a citizen to talk to the council. When the when the citizens are talking, they're speaking to us as members of this council. They're giving their input so that we can conduct our business. There's nothing that prevents us from from participating in that, and there's nothing that prevents people from putting agenda items. And if you put an agenda item on, if I put it on and somebody tables it and four other people support that, then that so be it. That's that's the process. That's not one person's doing it. That's the rule of, that we follow. That's one of the rules we follow. And and that's why I just feel strongly that I think it's a slippery slope that, yes, one person is doing it. What what if all of us did it? What if I go down there and I start saying that, as a city, we should be doing X? Well, I've already put my, well, those are issues that we are, if you look at the charter, every issue that comes before us, we make a commitment to be open-minded, to listen to both sides. But if I'm presenting an issue that I, and and I've heard several of these, that I've already made up my mind as what should happen, and I go down there and present that, then you automatically removed yourself from that future discussion because you're you're not, you're not following the charter. That prevents it, that from happening, so.
And again, speaking down there is not about agenda items. It's a citizen's comment. I would encourage you not to strip me of my citizenship.
I don't even know what that means. Can you describe? What do you mean by that?
You might find out.
No, what, you, if you're going to say it, you might as well define it because I don't understand.
Why am I, as a citizen, not allowed to do what every other citizen does? Why are you not allowed to do what every other citizen does?
Because I'm representing the council. I've been elected to serve, and I've been elected to follow the rules that this committee set. And if this motion passes, it will be a rule of the committee. It's not depriving you of anything. You've agreed to follow the rules that this committee has, or that this council has put in.
And apparently, I'm no longer a citizen.
Further discussion.
If I could, Counselor Chair, I just would like to add to the conversation that a counselor's opinion or words carry more weight than a citizen. And so when you get and you stand at that podium as a citizen, identifying yourself as a citizen, but everybody watching and everybody in the room recognizes you as a counselor, the words that you use and the things that you say carry the weight of a counselor. They don't carry the weight of the citizen who comes in and addresses the council. So I just wanted to say that 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 impact, that is impactful. It's impactful to the staff when comments are made. It's impactful to the to the citizenry when comments that are made as a citizen are reported in the newspaper. And I think that that's, I think that, you know, that has to be identified and brought to the forefront.
Counselor O'Halloran.
Again, I will repeat myself. I did not forfeit my citizenship when I was elected to this council. Second point, if I may. It appears that there's a motion and a second. I would like to know this council's opinion if I should abstain from this vote. Before this goes forward, I would like to know your opinion if I should abstain from this or if you think there is no conflict of interest in me voting.
I think you should vote.
I think there's no conflict of interest. You have an interest, but I don't think it's a conflict.
I think it applies to all of us.
Yeah, I don't think it's a conflict.
Although you have utilized this measure, the rule would apply to all of us.
So this.
Do I, do I see anybody that sees a conflict of my vote?
I just see both sides of the whole issue. I I rarely do. I see both sides of it.
I just don't want to cast a vote if someone feels on this board.
I think you should vote.
I understand what you're saying, Steve, and I also understand what you're doing.
But before we vote, could we have a formal?
Well, no one's, no one's objecting. Everyone agrees that you should vote.
Yeah.
And before we vote, if he does have something he wishes to just say, and it's not an agenda item, can he say it from here? item, can he say it from here?
It's like anything. You, you have opportunities to speak. Remember, in the role of, as a councillor, that's what you're speaking at. And there are certain things that if it's not an agenda item and, you know, if it's an involved process, there, there are limits to that. We can't just introduce items. But comments can be made and, and there are ways to do that. We do it all the time.
For example, he has made helpful comments for the city when it came to the excise tax that was going to another municipality unjustly. And that ultimately ended up, I believe, being rectified. Now, on, on your point, I see where that that could have been an agenda item, but how would he have presented that? He would have had to write for, in advance, and that would have had to go to public notice? Is that what you're saying?
Agenda items are publicly.
But he was just making a comment. So I see both points.
Yeah.
Counselor Howell.
And to further that, I'm not about to enter an agenda item that's about me. I got elected to serve the people of Ellsworth. I would never bring an agenda item to this board that is about me. I'm here to represent the people of Ellsworth.
And so all of his comments, all of your comments have been about your personal associations with the city.
That's, I, I don't agree with that. I think there have been comments, and I don't want to rehash them unless you want me to, but I, I would leave that to you. But I'm not, I'm not going to rehash them, but I certainly put them on the table if, if Council O'Halloran is interested in hearing that, my take on that. But I think there have been some issues that are council-related issues that creates a potential problem for us.
So we have a motion and a second.
Any further discussion?
I'm just so fifty-fifty on the whole thing.
You've got about five seconds, Steve.
I just wish that there was a more clearer way where somebody could express themselves without bringing, because before, when people were putting agenda items on every week, there was a problem there too. We're not going to flood this frequent thing with agenda items all night long, you know, and so it just, fifty-fifty is me.
All right. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Four in favor, three against. Motion passes. Item twenty-two, executive session to discuss labor negotiations, side agreement between the City of Ellsworth and Ellsworth Firefighters Association's Local 3402 International Association of Firefighters, AFLCIOCLC, in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter thirteen, Section four oh five, Paragraph six, D. We will be coming out of executive session to report.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? One opposed, we're going into executive session. Anybody need to take a quick break?
Item 23, Council Order Number 081506, Action on Labor Negotiations Side Agreement Between the City of Ellsworth and Ellsworth Firefighters Association Local 34002 International Association of Firefighters AFL-CIO-CLC.
Move to approve as presented.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. Item 24, Approval of the State of Maine PERS Retirement Plan Contract Previously Approved During Labor Negotiations. This item has been approved in labor negotiations for police and fire. The state needs this action to formalize the change.
So this is a thing we already approved, but we have to approve it more?
Correct. Me, in your executive sessions, you approved the labor negotiations with the police union and then this sidebar with the fire department. But the item, the last page in your packet, they need that exact wording for them to actually implement. So you can just say move as written and then I'll use that in the...
Move as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, we're adjourned.